All right, folks, it's seven, 7:02 according to my computer. So I'm going to call the July 13th, 2021, regular planning board meeting into session, roll call vote. Do you know?
Here.
Bill Spalding.
Here.
Megan Minasali.
Here.
And Jim Hogan.
Here.
All right, Jim, welcome to the board. It's good to have you here and hopefully you'll be able to contribute and you know, see how we do things luckily, we don't have too many major things going right now, but we had enough going on to make things interesting. So, so welcome. Item, item number two, approval of minutes from June 22nd. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, in a second. All right, Bill Spalding seconds.
Second.
Any discussion, any, any changes, anyone have any comments on them? So, no, I didn't either. So, okay, roll call vote to approve the minutes. Do you know?
Yes.
Bill Spalding.
Yes.
And Megan Minasali.
Yes.
All right, and Jim, since you weren't here, can't vote on that one at this point. So, item number three, Lobus Ave Extension, I'm gonna push that back a little bit because Attorney McGrail is on another another meeting right now. He should join us shortly and we can get that worked on. So, I'm going to move to item number four, board discussion review of current zoning around the lake. I know when we last left, we were trying to get a list of property owners. I know Bill and Megan worked on a letter that we're going to be sending out to potentially affected property owners to get their input on what may be beneficial to a new zoning district up there. So I don't know, Bill, do you have anything else to add at this point?
No, I just, I am a little concerned about our schedule and if we are going to work towards a fall town meeting that I feel we're running out of time. When I put together the ideal timeline, we're hoping to start holding public hearings by now. So I'm a little frustrated about the delay. And, but I do understand, I do understand that it's very important to have the property owners on board and in some type of a meeting so we can discuss any concerns or ideas from them before moving forward with something that could trigger delays. I, I don't know how to better word that, but I'll also add, working with Megan was wonderful to get that letter written. We had all the pieces, thanks to Theo and you, and I did, we just had, it was like a puzzle just organizing it. And then when it, it really came together, Megan and I were just like, yep, that's it. Okay, we're done. So i- is that something that you want to share now with the board or was it something that was already sent out? To the board, because I know it went to you and Aaron.
The letter, yeah, it hasn't, we could send that along so the board can see it because obviously we're still waiting for Aaron to get that list.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's what I meant. I didn't mean to share it now, but to share it with the board members. That way everybody understands it before we do send it to the property owners.
Yeah, I, what I'll do is I will get that. I know, I think the only thing I had recommended was to sign it. You know, make note that it was from the entire board since we were putting this together. So, but I will send that to Theo and to Jim to review that we'll be sending that out. All right. Any other discussions on that at this point? Are you, we're still gonna wait until we get some input from from potential property owners? And then we're still looking at doing a forum at some point. Is that correct?
I believe so.
All right.
I don't know if Megan has anything to add to.
No, I, I just wanted to see if we got an up, an update from Aaron at all in regards to the list. Or if we have a timeline of when we will get that list because the last note that I saw, she said she would be sending it and I just didn't know if that had been passed along or what the status update was on the list to send the letter to.
She had some correspondence from her today that she has the list just about done. She had some holdups today where she couldn't finish it. So I'm hoping within the next few days, we can get that. And then we'll get it sent out. So unfortunately, I don't have a firm timeline on when that would happen, but hoping soon. So, yeah, I.
Yeah, because my question was just like we had put in as the timeline in the initial letter to respond by July 12th, which was yesterday. So we just would need to revise that date of when we would want a response from the property owners by, in regards to updating, rate updating that timeline.
Yeah. All right. Yeah. And we'll, we'll definitely change when it goes out. We'll definitely update that. I'm, I'm thinking that a fall town meeting is going to be extremely tight at this point if we're going to have a couple of public hearings on this after a public forum. So, I mean, we can still push for that, but I think it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be tight. So as of right now, we're still going to have our our scheduled meetings for July and August. So we still have some time. But we'll have to see what kind of input we get from the property owners and then hopefully they will participate in the forum that we have. So I would think if we're going to schedule a forum, we would need to schedule that at our next meeting.
Do you mind if I ask a couple of questions as early? So I've watched the last meeting and there's a lot of correspondence back and forth as it relates to this topic. But if we are to hold a forum with, with the property owners, the intent is to, you know, we're talking about potentially adding some additional restrictions or an overlay district, for lack of a better term, for those properties that directly above the lake. Have we, you know, I know, I know that we haven't kind of defined what that actually looks like yet, but do we know what types of things are potentially on the agenda? Or how would we communicate that with the, the property owners in advance of that forum? This letter's going out and telling them that they're, we're looking at potentially doing something, but you know, if we have a forum with them, what would that, have we thought about what that agenda for that forum would look like?
Right now, we were thinking on the, basically agenda for that is a listening forum to discuss with them what action items, what changes, enhancements to that zone could be made to help protect the lake. And obviously it's going to mean some restrictions potentially closer to the lake. So we need to have some kind of carrot to get them to do that. So we were trying to figure out from them what would be best in order for them to help, you know, reach that goal of some lake protection district. So, and we kind of specifically tried not to come up with anything too concrete now because we want to have an open mind when we go into this. So it's again, we're just want to hear from them first before we start putting things down and writing and then working it out at that point.
Matt, can I add a little bit to that?
Sure.
And Jim, what I'd like to do is to either meet with you separately or to forward you some of the research and different ideas that we've had in the last, I want to say since January, and really we're looking at what type of uses are permitted with the dimensional controls and what type of special permit application process there would be. And we're looking for incentives. How do we say this would be so much better for the town and for you as a property owner to enhance economic development or whatever it might be? If we get together to discuss these three topics to help define them? What would you be looking for in this? So that's more of the flavor. We do want to, as a board, look at continue with public hearings to have the town involved to see, you know, what type of uses would happen in that lake zoning or lake business district and, and how does that work for? I guess protecting a lake has always been a tough word. It's more of the views, the vistas, the, the walkability, the understanding of the distance from the lake and the height of how that could step back and still provide sun and fun and everything else that we want around the lake. So it's, it's a whole big thing of clay and we just want some input from all the parties before we go and just open it up to public. And, and I didn't understand this at first, but after discussing it with the board and some people from that attended our meetings, it was really clear to me that it's, it's important to go through this type of process. I really still would like to get this somehow in front of fall town meeting if we do have enough time, meaning August and September to, to make this work. And I know, Matt, as you said in the past, and it's, it's very important to get the wording correct. So Jim, I hope that helps a little bit more into the detail.
Yeah, it does. It definitely provides a lot of color. And then I guess the other thing, when I'm thinking about the lake and, and you know, I kind of think of it almost as four different sections, right? On the southern section, there's a lot of public realm area, you know, open space that's currently in place. You know, on the east side of the lake, it's basically a budding that roadway. You know, are we talking about those properties impacted on the other, other side of that roadway? Or is it kind of, you know, I'm assuming it's more really on the north side of the lake, where you have all those industrial uses that are zoned right now. And on that west side in between the cemetery and the rest of those industrial uses, that's really kind of the north and west component that you're really looking at, but a potential overlay.
Yep. And I'll share with you the research again, and that will, I could walk you through it too, and probably take about 15 or 20 minutes separate from tonight's meeting. I think it's, it's important to get a good handle on that. But yes, we, we understand the whole residential side on the east side of Main Street. It is, as you explained, the very top of the lake and the business and limited business, neighborhood business districts that then wrap around to North Ave and down to Vets Field. And I've been focusing more on Vets Field and that area around there where there are some business districts that property owners and we really want to make sure between that whole length of North Ave really just south of Church and Prospect, all the way up to the, the top of the lake. I think will have the biggest impact. But yes, it is broken down and there is a an overlay district for the municipality. And yeah, I can share a lot of that with you to see some of the ideas and where they came from. That will bring you up to speed.
Yeah, I would appreciate if maybe we just connect offline and, and I can kind of get caught up on that, make sure that.
Yeah, if that's okay with you, Matt.
Yep, that's fine. And, you know, let me kind of reiterate that the, the form we want to have is to look at solutions of what, what can be done. So it's going to be open to not only just the property owners, but others throughout town. But since we don't have anything defined yet, I'm kind of hoping that people don't come out against something that doesn't exist yet. So we, we want solutions here. We're, we're looking to have some input on writing this and writing it properly. So it benefits the lake and the town and the businesses all together. So I don't want to think that we're only going to listen to these property owners. We aren't, but we specifically want their input. So that's why we're targeting them with a letter and letting them know that we have this and that we're looking for their input. We're not trying to, you know, do something that's, you know, going to harm them. We, you know, we know this is a, a process where each side needs to work towards a goal. And that's what we're looking to get is what the goal is and how we can develop this district to help. So I just want to put that up there.
I, and with, as, I mean, that, that's really important. And that's part of what has colored sort of our discussions in prior meetings, getting from perhaps like some master overlay. Because that's, I think, conceptually hard to define geographically and which is why we then were also thinking about a new zoning district that you then could apply to the, the, the business or the industrial properties that are situated around, around the lake.
All right. So, so that's, that's an update on what we have going with that. Like I said, I'll, I'll check in with Aaron and see where that the list of a butter's names are and how we're going to get that out. I'm still not sure if we can just email them or we need to mail them because I don't think we have contacts for, you know, email contacts for everyone. So if we mail them out, there's going to be a little bit of extra delay in there too, just so you know that. So just trying to set our expectations that once we get this list, it's not going to be, we send an email out and we air back within days. It, it could be, we need to send this out in a letter to everyone to make sure that the proper property owner, the proper people that own that, those properties, we get their input. So.
Matt, if I could suggest, and I don't mind doing this or splitting the work, working with Aaron to get the information, I would suggest we send the email out to all parties. And I don't mind following it up with an email. I'm sorry, a phone conversation, a phone call right after that to make sure they receive the email. And maybe it does need to be followed up with a letter, but if it could expedite the process, I would definitely be in for calling as many of these property, property owners after the email goes out. If that's, that's an option.
Well, the thing is, we have the legal entity, you know, listed on the, in the Sash's website. That doesn't necessarily mean we have a phone number or an email address. So, you know, that, that's one of the things that's taken Aaron some time to, to get this list together is people don't file an email address or phone number necessarily. They do have a mailing address and a physical address of where they're the owner of the property resides. So we want to make sure we get it to the, to the proper property owner and not someone at that address who may be acting on, you know,
Right.
behalf of the owner.
Is it, is it possible to, and I don't know if this is something as a planning board member we're allowed to do, but could I go to the property and in person and ask just for the correct information and explain to them what we're trying to achieve? And to find the right, if, if this would be obviously for the contact information that Aaron doesn't already have.
If we have the, you know, if, if it exists, again, it could be a, an owner at a P O box too, you know.
Understood.
Just, you know, from history of going through not, not everyone physically resides at the listed parcel. So that's one of the things that may take some time. So.
You know, if I wasn't an architect, I'd like to be a detective. So this is something that I wouldn't mind doing.
You'd be surprised at how, how much people want to hide too. So.
True. Okay. Good. If, if, if you do see an option to expedite this, I am up for any part of it.
All right. Sounds good. So I think we're going to move on from that. So let's go back to, so we'll have this discussion again at our next meeting. And hopefully the, we will have made some progress, much progress by then. So, all right. So back to item three, Lobus Ave Extension Approval of Surety. I see Attorney McGrail is on with us. Attorney McGrail, would you like to explain what's, what we're, we're at right now?
Whoops. Sure, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Appreciate it. Members of the board. For the record, attorney Brian McGrail, representing R W Lobus Ave LLC, the current entity owner of the subdivision known as Lobus Ave Extension. We're here before the board tonight for pretty straightforward purpose. We are looking to have the bond amount or the surety amount approved by the board. Currently, as you know, this is an approved subdivision under construction, Lobus Ave Extension, a three lot subdivision. It's well on its way. The owner has made some significant progress on really fast process on putting the roadway in, the roadway is in, utilities are in, hot top binder is in. And what they're looking to do now is to, currently the, the, the surety that's in place is the Form G covenant that they're not allowed to pull any building permits on the lots at this time until another form of surety replaces that to make sure that the town has the ability to finish a roadway in the event the developer decided not to. So we're looking to get that amount approved as recommended by the engineering department of the DPW. And also to have the board authorize the chair to execute any surety document that would be required and or approved by town council. That I will work with Tom Mullen in that regard. And then the chair would be able to sign it. So it could be recorded at the registry of deeds. So that's the request is for the acceptance of the surety amount that was suggested by the town engineer. And I believe he did submit that. I can, I think I can bring that on the screen, Mr. Chair, if you want to see that correspondence to the board.
Um, yeah, if you have that handy, I do have a couple of questions on that on the surety amount and then others about the ongoing work up there.
Sure. Can I get ability to share?
Yeah, me. Let's see. Do I need to make you the co-host or the host? Cause.
If you go to the share button and then you go to the right of it, kind of the right side of it, is there a sub arrow that allows you to go up and allow other people to share?
Yeah.
That did it.
It did. Okay, there you go.
Were able to see that?
Yep.
Okay. So this is a correspondence from Eric Sherman to you, Mr. Chair. And this is the estimate to complete the roadway that he has suggested total of $140,000.
All right. So a couple of questions I had is, are you guys putting streetlights up there?
I, I, well, they're called for in the surety. You know, I would assume, you know, I, the, the, the basically two streetlights that will be put in.
Okay. Cause I was looking at the plans. I did not see them and I don't remember discussions on them. So that was one of my questions.
Again, we can have a discussion with the board on that. If you're interested in what type of streetlights they might be.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to go forward with that, I, I think we need to know where they're going to go and what types they're going to be. So.
Makes sense to me. And I don't, and I don't recall any discussion on those either, to be honest. So.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
And, and the reason why I, I'm asking that because it, in the past, what they tend to do with some of these subdivisions is put the, the type of street light that basically casts light everywhere instead of the LED hooded downlights. So I'd want to know what is planned up there before the, the gas and light department uses up whatever they have in their stockroom.
So, yeah, I, and I think my client would agree with you. I think, you know, this is going to call for something tasteful that doesn't shed unnecessary light. Maybe, you know, lamppost type street lighting.
Yeah. And it, obviously it's a, it's an environmentally sensitive area up there with the Concom involved. So I don't know if, you know, if you even need to go back to them. Because we may need to just check and see if, what, what the, you know, what's going on with this.
Might not even need them. So, you know, it's a point well taken.
Okay.
We'll, we'll figure that out.
And then there is, we had specified the type of fencing to go along the top of the wall. But I just see you have chain link fence. Is that all that's going to be there or?
Did it spec a fence? Mr. Chair.
I thought so. This is one of the issues that Bill Demorey was, was discussing about.
I think Bill wanted it. I mean, I don't think my client's going to want chain link fence on top of that wall. I'm wondering if this is a different type of, if this is a different area for fencing.
Okay.
I don't, you know, I can, I, if you want, I can bring, I think I have the subdivision plan if that would help. I don't know if it's specked on there.
I think that was one of the items we were, you know, we had waited to decide on later too. So I was looking at the plans also and.
You didn't see anything in there, Mr. Chair?
I didn't. So we may just, you know, just ask these questions. So.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to me that it's going to be a chain link fence on that wall.
Okay.
I don't think that that's the most aesthetic thing. So I mean, that's something that we can, that I can make a note on that we certainly can have a discussion on also.
Yeah. I mean, in the end, no matter what the surety is, I'm sure it's going to be resolved to everyone's satisfaction. So.
I think, you know, I think the engineering department, to their credit, is pretty conservative with their numbers. There's usually a lot of padding here.
Yeah. Okay. And then Brian, you and I had a discussion earlier about the roadway that leads into there. I had been looking for the agreement to make sure that that road will get paved and I couldn't find it. And thank you for forwarding that to me. So I don't know if anyone's been up there, you, you know, in order to get to this road, you have to go over the older portion of Lobus Ave, which is frankly a mess right now. And there was a, an, an offer from the developers of the front portions, even though it was an A and R, we could not put conditions on it. They offered to repave that road up there. And I don't think it's any secret that not only the DPW, but many board members made sure, were insistent that that get done along that, that, that goes simultaneously. So Attorney McGrail pointed out to me where it is in the decision that in the end it will be done. So I believe Brian, they cannot basically occupy those homes until that roadways is complete. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's a condition in our planning board decision with you on this subdivision that prevents the owner from applying for certificates of occupancy for any of the houses until the roadway improvements on that entry roadway are completed as required by your agreement with the owner of that property.
Okay. So, you know, that was one of my concerns. So I don't know if anyone else had those concerns, but I, I'm confident that we have enough conditions in place where that will that will be built before this is released completely.
I think the board thought we might be in this circumstance, Mr. Chair, and that's why you put that condition in.
Yeah. All right. And then there's one other issue. I, I went up to the site and was taking a look at it. Unfortunately, I'm, I don't have my work computer, so I don't have all my files. Would be possible for you to bring up the plans, Brian, so we could take a look. There's, there's one area that I have some concern that needs.
Subdivision plan, Matt?
Yes.
I think I can. Hang on a second. Might take me a second.
That's fine.
Okay.
Can I ask Matt and other board members? How far back was this originally submitted, is it 2018? There's a reference to a fence repair and install project, is that?
Yeah.
So that, that, that's all I, I, it gives me a sense of timing and when this was originally before the planning board.
Yeah, it went back a few years and, and it, it was a long process because it was. It was done in conjunction with the Concom because there are wetlands up there, so I think it took about a year before we hammered out all the details on this, so. A lot of eyes have been looking at this.
I have the definitive subdivision plan. Dated. Let me, let's see. Dated June 11th, 2019. I believe this is the one the board made the decision on.
Is that the final revision date, Bill?
I'm looking at. If, I'll, I could share it and then you can see.
I'll tell you what the decision references, the final revision date, final revision date would be September 2, 2020.
Let me zoom over to there. Oh, okay, so we're down.
That's not it.
It's not it?
Well, September, if you have a revision date of September 2 of 2020 on it, you've got the right plan.
It's. No change, the sheet 929 to 2020.
There you go, that's it.
Well, this is, yeah, it's on the same email that came in on the planning board divi- decision.
Great, let me, so are you sharing it? Oh, thank you, okay.
Yep, let me. I believe you can all see that, correct?
Yeah, it should be revision date somewhere there.
Yeah, it's down.
There you go.
You have its own divisions, revision, so you can see down here, there's a. Increased buffer to wetlands by seven.
Yeah, 9220, that's what, 9220, that's what I said, so I think you got the right one.
Yeah, that's it, if you can go to, I think, sheet three, Bill.
Hey, we're on sheet three.
Yeah, that's not it then, keep going. Again, I.
Here's sheet four, this is the site construction plan.
This is the grading plan is what I'm looking for, so.
Utility and profile grading plan.
There you go.
Sheet six.
If you could zoom into around station 75, right in there. All right, so Brian, this is my concern, when, when you come in here. Coming down Lovis Ave and you're heading straight into there, there's a, a tree that was not, not picked up. But it is basically at the. If you see that first proposed 214 contour there.
Oh, I see it, okay.
Right in there.
Got it, thank you.
There's a tree that's about three feet off the edge of pavement that is heavily filled now. And as you can see, there's supposed to be about a five to six foot grade off from the curb line out. Or going away from the road before it starts to slope down. Currently, you've got about two feet right now and it drops off at about a one to one slope. It's basically a hazard if someone were to drive off there.
This is right here, Matt?
Yep, right in there. So I'm just the.
The tree right here.
Well, that's a proposed tree, so. So basically, see where it says CCB, the Cape Cod berm and small numbers right by 216 there, proposed 216. Yeah, right in there, so basically is an existing tree right in there and it was never picked up. And then it's, it's, the grading is not correct up there yet, so I'm just wondering when that's gonna be corrected? And has anyone looked at that?
Okay, oh, I, I don't know, but I, I think I get it, so basically in that area. Let me make sure I have this right, around the 214 mark that I'm looking at and then approximately area. It, the plan shows that it should be kind of five feet level before it slopes and currently it's only about two feet off the roadway and it starts to slope.
Yeah.
And because of, so that, you look at that as a hazard because people could go off the roadway and they're gonna go right off and over and they don't have any buffer. And then on top of that, because of the way the slope is, it negatively impacts a tree that's affected by that harsh slope.
Correct, so, it's basically at, at station. Zero plus 75 left, so if you, if you told the engineers that, they would know exactly where it is.
Yeah, I'll run it by Eric and my client, Eric Sherman, the town engineer. Okay, I've got, I've got some notes here, the streetlights, chain link fence issue, and then I'll, I'll. What I'll do, Mr. Chair, is I'll do an email to, to Eric, to my client, and I'll copy you.
Okay.
Just to kind of document it and, and that way you can kind of follow what the resolution is, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine, so. So that, those are my concerns right now, so I don't know if anyone else has been up there or has any concerns at this point.
Matt, I have been up there and I have biked through, it, it's been about three weeks now, but you're able to bike all the way down through the path, I think. Seeing the development that's happening and understanding the grade and, and more what's happening, this, this area over here. At the turnaround, you can see the proposed wall and the retaining wall, and I believe this is where our board spoke about that fence. That would sit on top of that, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and, and that's where, back to the chain link fence, that I'd have to look back in my notes to see, but I don't think that's what Bill Demorey or we discussed as a board to be there.
Yeah, but if you're looking at it.
That point was there too.
If you're looking at it, Bill, and, and I didn't, you know, I, I'm just. I, I kind of didn't know where that fence was, but take a look at the plan right up above where you circled, it actually proposes a five foot high black chain link fence. See the note?
Yep. Yeah, again, I'd have to look back in my notes, I. Just to.
And I don't recall, but I just noticed that note, I, I, I remember what Mr. Demorey's issue was, and I think it might actually be in the decision. His concern was, I believe, to refresh some of the board members' memories that were, that sat on this was, was. He wanted the, the fence post melted into the wall. He didn't want them kind of melted on the side of it.
Yeah, he was concerned of the stridency, the structural support.
Yeah, but, you know, I don't know if it was really the type of fence.
Okay.
So. You know, I'm happy, you know, I, I, you know, if, if, if your board is like, you know, maybe we'd like to talk about something different or possible there, you know. I, I always advise my clients to be open for discussion, you know, especially as things are being built because you start to see things on the site. That were difficult to notice on paper, so. You know, I mean, I'm happy to kind of send a message, is there any other option for that?
Well, my, my concern is more about the safety and less about the aesthetic in this case, where the location is.
All right, yeah, if we can look and see if there was some type of fence that was. Discussed and perhaps missed in decision, or if we didn't discuss any, then, then the black, you know, the black. Chain link fence is what it's gonna be.
Paul Revis was, you know, Paul was involved in this, if you remember, and Paul was always, always an advocate for the black chain link fence because his theory was that it kind of gets lost in the, in the landscape. Okay. You know, that was always what Paul would advocate for. When, when he was involved in these projects, so I think if you go back with the notes, he might have been the one that wanted that material. Because he, he just feels like you just, you just don't see it. It blends in well.
Right.
Okay. All right.
I don't have any other comments. Matt, were you looking for a motion to approve the. Surety and to also. For board vote to allow. You to have signing power and approval. For the surety, surety document?
I don't know if officially needs to be a vote, but we might as well just do it, that way we have it on record, so.
I believe we do, for you to sign something for the board. I believe we need to, for each instance, need to give the chair or another member of the board the authority to do that.
All right, that's fine, so. Do you want to make a motion?
May I ask one question before we do that?
Sure.
The, the 140,000 surety, is that, that is replacing the prior or is that in, in addition to?
No, that, that is the amount that should be left if for some reason the developer walked away at this point. That's how much the town believes it would take for them to finish this. In case something happened up there, so this is basically, you know, a shopping list for what's remaining up there. Anyone else have any other questions or? All right, so do I hear a motion to. Approve the surety as presented and authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the board?
I'll second that, I'll make the motion.
You'll move it, okay?
Move it. Thanks.
And Jim seconds it, all right, roll call vote. Theo, no.
Yes.
Phil Spalding?
Yes.
Megan Minasali?
Yes.
And Jim Hogan?
Yes.
Okay. Just, just so new members understand, many times we would, we would get the, this surety and the agreement and. Would have it in a meeting, we'd all sign for it, but because of. Logistics now, it's just easier for one person to be authorized to sign it, so that, that's why we're doing this. We don't typically authorize the chair to just sign off on everything. So, just in case anyone was wondering.
Yeah, Matt, and if I could add, that's why we want to do it for each instance and not have it as a blanket.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, Attorney McGrail, is that satisfy? Your, your needs right now?
Yes, members of the board, thank you.
All right, all right, thanks, Brian. All right, item number five, items not anticipated. Does anyone have any items they want to bring up at this point? All right. Bill?
I have a few, one is Vision 2030, if you haven't. Filled out the last survey, please do, and please share it with other people you know in Wakefield, it's, it's definitely, I think. It's gonna be a strong. Or a helpful. Survey for us as a planning board to look at as we move into the fall and into the winter to really help work on. A future master plan or pull together all the Vision 2030, where is it going? So please get, get that out there as much as possible, if you don't have it, please go to the town website and you'll find it there at 2030 and you can share the survey. Second item would be, welcome Jim, and I'd like to, with your permission, Matt, to go over the onboarding process. With Jim, similar to I did with Theo and, and start to form with Megan and Joanne, but I, I just feel as a board, we need to have. Some type of written booklet, not just, hey, Jim, you're welcome, let's start voting, but more like some type of. An electronic handbook PDF that it's open and sits on our website, which is expectations and responsibilities. And helpful hints for a new member of the planning board. I have it drafted and it's something I'd like to go with, go through with Jim, if you don't mind.
Sure, I, I, I haven't seen this, so maybe. Maybe we can review it before we start rolling it out?
We can, it's more of a two page, here's a link to this, here's a link to that, here's where everything is on our town webpage. And a little bit of the history of what I know of the planning board.
Okay, yeah, maybe we can, we can review this and then, and then send it out, just. Just for consistency's sake and. How's that sound?
Sounds perfect.
Okay. All right, so we'll work on that the next couple of days and then Jim will send that out to you. So. All right, does anyone else have any, any other items to discuss? All right. There is, I know Aaron and I have been going back and forth talking about email addresses, I'm just trying to. Get a master list of email addresses of where people would prefer. Any correspondence be sent and we're still going back and forth with, with the town, so. Just letting you know, we're still working on that and I hope to have. Something to share soon. So I know I get emails from different accounts and it gets a little crazy to try to keep, keep up with. Who's sending you where and, and when, so that's my goal for that, so. But otherwise, I've got nothing else, so. But that, I'm gonna.
Actually, Matt, can, just to be on the record, I feel that any elected town official should have a Wakefield. Email address and not have to rely on their personal email address, I know this has come up before, that if anything has to be. Reviewed in any type of legal manner, it would be great if we could just hand over our Wakefield address so that he can look through and not have to. Maneuver through many different addresses and personal emails, so I, I feel strongly that any elected. Town official should have a Wakefield email address.
Elected or appointed.
I strongly agree as well.
Well, I strongly agree too, I, I, I haven't got to the point of actually, you know, publicly going out and saying. That we need to do this because I've been trying to work behind the scenes, so. But I, I share your concerns and hopefully something will come along to that, I mean, as it is. To be on a board in this town, there are certain requirements that you basically need to have, you need to have. High speed internet, you need to have a computer, you need to have all that stuff, and that's all, just assume that whoever is gonna. Join a board that has that and is gonna maintain and supply that stuff, so. It, it kind of sets a bar for anyone who wants to participate, if they don't have that, they're basically, you know, shut out from participating in, in town government, which is not. Not the way it was intended, it's, it's the way it's ended up because of this pandemic, but coming out of this, hopefully. We'll get some solutions to some of this stuff, so. I'm gonna keep pushing and we'll see where it ends up.
Matt, I believe Susan had her hand up.
I have a question?
Sure. Yep, go ahead, Susan.
So when I send out the agenda in minutes, do you want me to just send it to your Wakefield address at this point, or do you want me to still put your personal email on there?
For now, just, you can send it to both because there's a little, we're not quite sure. If one of them's gonna be around much longer, so let's, let's just keep it for now, but. Yeah, I'm hoping we get a resolution at some point, so. All right, so. Again, Jim, welcome.
I said, Matt, is there, is there a list already? Like, I, I, I don't have a Wakefield email list or email address, I'm assuming everyone's gonna use my personal for now, and then is there a list of like the key contacts that? I guess that's probably what Phil was referring to, right?
Yeah. I, I believe I have your email, yeah, I believe I have your email address already, I can send you. The ones we're using right now. The, yeah, getting the, the Wakefield email address, I know. It came to an issue. It came to an issue when I tried to get Theo signed up, and that's when. It kind of went into discussions that um. Maybe that's not the way the town wants to go, so that's why we're we're stuck on that right now, so yeah, in the meantime. Uh, use your personal email, I I almost suggest if you have one that you could dedicate just for this, that might be better because. I know uh, with me, some, some of my private emails, personal emails gets tied up into public things and uh. I'm trying to avoid that, but that's, you know. Something we're dealing with right now, so that would be my suggestion, but that's completely up to you, so.
Got you, understood.
All right, so at that, I'm gonna uh.
Um, can I? Um, in the, the planning board onboarding, um, if you've got links for. Uh, the open meeting law kind of uh, requirements that, you must have that, so that's. Uh, that's helpful, cuz that's, cuz right, remote, we're all getting into this morass of how many, how many people can be. Uh, communicated to, uh, and and it needs, it need, those need to be individual, right?
Yeah, and so basically, we, nothing should be replied to all in in emails, and. What I tend to do is I will send an email out. And usually I send it to Susan and then I B C C everyone else, so they'll all get the email, but you cannot respond to it. You know, you could respond to me singularly, but you couldn't accidentally hit reply all and then violate an open meeting law, so. Uh, that's how I tend to do it, um. Is uh, by blind C C-ing, so there is no issue with that, so. Susan, that might be something you want to do also, is is. Just basically send it out, so. It's going to everyone, but that, in that case, they cannot hit reply all and accidentally. Violate an open meeting laws, so.
Okay, and can you send an email to Jim and myself, so that I have Jim's email address to add to the list?
Yep, I will get that, so. All right, anything else or? Are we done at this point? Okay, so uh, item six, I'm I'll uh. Hear a motion to adjourn?
On motion.
Motion made by Theo, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jim, okay, roll call vote, uh. Bill Spalding.
Yes.
Megan Minasali.
Yes.
Uh, Jim Hogan.
Yes.
Uh, Theo Noel.
Yes.
And myself is yes, so um. For this planning board meeting, uh. We are done, thank you, everyone, and uh.